So I would like to start the select board meeting of May 25th, 2023. Beginning with an executive session at 6:30 PM and I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to read the executive session agenda portion.
Good evening. Tonight's executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to threat and potential litigation if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board in the town. And the chair does so declare to discuss the matter of five-star building corps versus the town of Sherburne pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam 449 Mass. 444 parentheses, 2007 for the library.
Thank you. Does anyone have any revisions to the agenda as read? If not, I do declare that we need to discuss this in executive session. So I move that we go to executive session now. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And I am I as well. And let everyone in the meeting and we're now gonna start the open session of the select board meeting of May 25th, 2023 at 6:33 PM Chicago time, 7:33 PM your time. And I would like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the open session agenda.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the select will can vote to amend or approve the agenda as presented tonight. Melinda O'Neil is here for a public comment. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance can be added. Item number one is the reorganization of the select board. Item number two is the consideration of a consolidated police CBA with Chris Petrini from Petrini Law and Chief Thomas Galvin. Item number three is consideration of reappointment for Petrini Law Town Council effective July 1, 2023, and Chris Petrini will be here for that. A parking restriction on North Main Street Route 27 at Laurel Field driveway. Chief Thomas Galvin will be here to discuss that. Item number five is the consideration of a bond anticipation note for Woodhaven Elder Housing and Time Buildings. Heidi Doyle, our town treasurer, will speak on that one. Item number six is consideration of a donation from the Sherburne Fire Rescue Association, and Chief Zach Ward will be here. Item number seven is Mass General Law Chapters 90, Section 17c, which is the implementation of the 25 mile per hour speed limit and establishment of safety zones with 20 miles per hour speed limits, and Sean Colleen, DPW Director, will be here for that. Safe passage signs for bicyclists from municipalities provided by Mastart. Eric Johnson asked that that be added for tonight's discussion. Item number nine is the memorandum of understanding for the Charles River Public Health District, and Jeremy Marsette, our town administrator, will speak on that. Next is the town purchasing policy and purchase order system implementation, and Jeremy Marsette will discuss that with the select board. Item number 11 is review and consideration of the select board meeting calendar through December 2023. Item number 12 was the consideration of a proclamation for Mike Kickham. Item number 13 is the consent agenda, which is the payroll limit, draft minutes of April 6th, a ratify a one-day paring license for May 20th for paring bounds, consideration of a one-day paring license for June 5th, 2023 for paring bounds, and our next meeting is June 1st and June 15th. And then item number 14 is consideration of routine business for the select board reports and town administrator reports.
That's a mouthful. Thank you.
Certainly was.
Do I have any suggested revisions or adjustments to the agenda?
Move to approve.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Terrific. So we're gonna start, we have Melinda here to do a public service announcement.
Thank you, Jeff. A quick question before I start. Am I expected to just talk, or can I share a couple quick slides? It doesn't matter either way to me.
Well, they're very quick. I mean, we really, it's just a quick comment, but if you want to share something quickly, that's fine.
No, that's, that's fine. Then I don't wanna, yeah, it's fine. Okay. So my name is Melinda O'Neil, and I'm a member of FPAC, which is the Farm Pond Advisory Committee. We've been posting some flyers and making posts on Nextdoor and other venues through the Yacht Club and Sustainability Coordinator, because we're trying to get the word out about a presentation that we're sponsoring. Anyone who's used Farm Pond in Sherburne for whatever swimming, sailing lessons, kayaking, fishing, you name it, we can do it. And the reason why is because Farm Pond is one of the cleanest bodies of water in the state, and we've been really lucky to have it so clean. And unfortunately, we found out last summer that with that record heat and the drought conditions, that even our beautiful Farm Pond is super vulnerable. So FPAC, along with volunteer resident Tom Traynor, have retained, and thank you to earmark money, Hillary Kenyon of Applied Watershed Sciences. She's gonna do an in-depth study for us to tell us sort of what's currently in the pond, what's entering into the pond. We're gonna use the information to create a plan to protect it. And so having residents knowledgeable about this will really help us to get the most out of it. So I really encourage all residents to please participate. If you can, mark your calendars for Tuesday, June 6th at 7:00 PM. You can get the link from the town website. You can go to Doors in Town. I've been putting flyers everywhere. You can check your email box from the Sustainability Coordinator. If you're yacht club member, you can check there. Zooms everywhere. If you can't find it, again, please check the town webpage, and it'll be right on there. There's also a press release that will give you some more information, and we look forward to seeing everybody on June 6th. So thank you.
Cool. Thank you. You're muted, Jeff.
I mute myself exactly, Stephen. It'll be on the website also. So thank you very much, Melinda. All right, our next agenda item is the reorganization of the select board. So I'll start by welcoming Stephen Si to the select board. We're very happy to have him.
Thank you.
So we'll go through and restructure ourselves. Eric?
Um, yeah, I'd like to make a nomination. I've been very pleased this last year, I think, with the current chair, far better than the previous chair. And I would like to nominate Jeff Waldron to chair the select board.
All right. Do I, we have a second for that?
Second.
We vote on this? I think we vote on each one, don't we?
Please, though.
All right, so then Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Yeah, I guess I'll be I as well. We'll make it five love. And so are there more nominations?
Uh, yes, I would like to nominate Eric Johnson as vice chair.
All right. And I'll second that, because he was way better. The previous one was way better, in my view. So it's been moved and seconded, so we'll vote. Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am I as well, and Eric?
I guess I.
Yes, all right. So that's 5-0 also. And so it's a tradition, Stephen. I nominated you to be select board clerk, which nobody really knows what the responsibilities are. It's, it's part of our tradition. So do I have a second for that nomination?
I second.
All right, Eric?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am I as well, and Stephen, your vote.
Aye.
All right, so we're, we're all set. We're locked and voted for another year, but thank you, everyone, for your contributions and looking forward to it. So our next agenda item, Chris Petrini has caused this fortunately to get our collective bargaining agreement straightened out and recorded in addition to the contract. So do you wanna walk us through that quickly, Chris?
Yes, thank you Chairman Jeff, and welcome to the board members, and congratulations, Stephen. Look forward to working with you for your election. So in any event, this particular item has to do with the consolidated CBA between the town of Sherburne and the Sherburne Police Association. And as I explained in my cover memo, last year, the board did approve in town meeting, and the union also ratified in town meeting, approved funding for the, for the MOU for the police association, for the police officers governing FY 23 through 25. And so we're finishing FY 23 now, of course. We have a little bit more than two years to go. And I've attached that MOU as Exhibit A to my May 22nd memo. But as I explained in my memo, it's best practice to, once you get an MOU, to then go back to the main collective bargaining agreement, which has all the provisions, not just the three to five pages of an MOU, and make sure all the wage changes, all the language changes are then embodied and incorporated into the various sections of the CBA, so that we have an up-to-date and accurate collective bargaining agreement. Because I've seen other situations where sometimes attorneys and towns and cities have to look back at two or three MOUs to try to piece together what the actual language is, which is, can create confusion or misunderstandings. And as I point out, memories can fade as well, and I pointed that out in my memo. So in any event, after the CBA, after the MOU was approved by the board last, last year, Chief Galvin and I worked with the union's new council, Amy Davidson, as well as the union leadership, and both sides suggested, you know, made edits and red lines to the latest version of the CBA, and came to agreement that all the changes that are reflected in the CBA are in fact required by this MOU. And we also took a look at the last MOU governing FY 20 to 22 also, and made sure those were, those changes were reflected. So my recommendation and this agreement has also been signed and approved. If you will note on page 25 of Exhibit B, I have approved it as the legal form after having gone through the provision. I know the Chief Galvin has reviewed it and approves it as well. And you'll note that the, that the three union offices, James Graziano, James Godino, and Kelly Bush have also approved on behalf of the Sherburne Police Association. So my recommendation is that the board authorize, authorize and execute this consolidated CBA.
Okay, thank you very much. Does the select board have any comments or questions on this? If not, do we have a motion to approve the CBA as negotiated?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am I as well. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. And it's good to sign, working through Diane, and Diane will get me the signature copy, and I'll send it around. Thank you.
Yep. And our next item is the consideration of the reappointment at Petrini Law. They've served us well in the past year. I've got, I've riled that one wrong. We are gonna, we're, we're now proposing that we assign a new three-year agreement with Petrini Law to renew the contract, and I welcome any comments from the select board.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment. I couldn't be happier. I think it's great. I fully support this, and I think it's a no-brainer. I have one question for Chris. Does this reappoint you for general counsel and labor counsel? Are those different things? I know you serve as both. Is that right?
Yeah, it's, and what I would do, by the way, is I just sent a letter expressing interest in our appreciation and enjoyment working for the town. So if the board approves this, I'll come forward with a redlined agreement that'll take the exact same agreement that was entered into last time with some modest changes. And so this won't be an actual approval and agreement if the board does approve it. But bottom line, Eric, is yes, the current agreement does appoint us as both a general counsel and labor counsel as well.
Okay.
And, and the retainer, which we have also, does include that, that the, the fixed fee retainer does include the labor work as well as part of that. So, and I'll explain next time what there's been to have been about 25,000 or so in discounts, legal services provided under the retainer. That includes the labor portion of the work also.
Okay.
So can I move approval?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Yeah, I was, I as well. So thank you, Chris.
No, thank you, board members, and I want to just let you know that I appreciate and respect the role that we serve you and put our heart and soul into it and want to see the best interest of the town further. So I thank you for each of you for your support on this. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. And the next is.
Nice and quick, I can, I can, I'm gonna depart now. So thank you. Take care.
All right.
Thank you. Bye. Take care.
So the next is the parking restriction on North Main Street. Chief Galvin, are you here? Are you doing it? Jeremy, I don't see him. In my midst?
He, the chief was to be here. I don't see him. I did just text him, but I can cover this.
I think, why don't you do it? Because I talked to Dave Goldberg a night or two ago, so I think you can explain it.
Sure. So the, the Rec Commission has, has approached us with, and you know, to try to help solve some access and parking issues at Laurel Field. They've been having during some of the weekends, you know, a fair amount of folks visiting the fields and have had some challenge with access and egress from Laurel Fields. And then in addition to that, they've been having some issues with, with dog poop, which they, they seem to think this is coming from not, not Sherburne residents, but out-of-town residents that are using Laurel Field when the gates are closed and there's no events going on. These, these cars are coming in parking just off the roadway and releasing some dogs that are not then cleaned up after. So they're looking at, the Rec Commissioner is looking at solutions, one of which would involve their request to add a parking restriction along North Main Street in the vicinity of the access drive to Laurel Field, so outside of the gate on the street side. That parking restriction would need to be approved by the select board as the road, the traffic and roadway commissioners, so that then the signs could be posted and that enforcement be, that restriction be enforced. On-site, the Recreation Commission is looking to add some signage as well, but that's within their purview on, you know, on property. So they're requesting that the select board consider no parking restriction on North Main Street at the access drive, so they can be posted and enforced.
So if I could?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
So I want to be sure there's enough parking for Sherburne residents who want to use that facility. And every time I hear in other communities about people parking at gates and not getting access and blah, 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 it's usually that means that there ought to be improvements to parking inside the facility.
You're misunderstanding the issue here. It's not the parking at the facility. It's the parking at two or three spots at the gate when the field is closed.
Yes, I, I understand the issue.
Okay.
Where are people gonna park when the gates closed?
What?
Where are people gonna park when the gate is closed?
We're not really supposed to be using the field when the gate is closed.
But isn't that a sort of fundamental question I'm asking?
We can ask that question. We want, the real root cause of this issue is the fields are unusable, because not only, it's not just Sherburne residents. I know you're concerned about Sherburne residents. They found professional dog walkers from other towns, neighboring towns, coming to Laurel Field to walk two and three, four dogs at once. And they've estimated in some parts of the day that 80% of the dogs on Laurel Field are from out of town with professional dog walkers. So it's resulted in the playing, the problem with farm, with Laurel Field is it's sort of both a recreation area like, you know, Rocky Narrows, and it's an athletic field. And so the fields have become covered in dog fiches, such that they, it's damaging the play. It's not, it's not access isn't the issue. The issue is fields are unusable.
Right, but I'm trying to raise the issue that I want these fields to be accessible to Sherburne residents on a fairly open basis. And therefore, putting parking restrictions to me is irrelevant to the fundamental problem, which is there shouldn't be the gates closed to Sherburne residents. So if there's a problem with dog watcher, dog walkers, there are ways that you can address that, but I don't want to close things out for Sherburne residents. If a Sherburne resident wants to go to Laurel Field, my question is where do they park when the gate is closed? Or are Sherburne residents forbidden from using the field? And if Sherburne residents are gonna be forbidden from using Laurel Fields, to me, that's a fairly serious issue.
Okay, so you made the point. So Jeremy, do you want to go first? Because you've been serving.
I just wanted to, David couldn't make it this evening, but I believe he was gonna have one of the other Recreation Commissioners attend. Is there someone here that might be?
No, I don't see any. I know all the recs, they're not here.
Worked on earlier, but he's, I don't see him here now.
Do you want, are you prepared? Do you want Sean? Sean and Eric both have their hands up too.
No, I just wanted to point that out and just give the commission a chance.
Which one of you wants to go first? You want to go first, Eric?
No, Sean wants to go first.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd love to. So the, one, not to act like a lawyer, but when that gate is closed, the commission has the right to close that gate, and they close that gate for a reason. Nobody's supposed to be in there. Not a Sherburne resident, not a Natick resident, it doesn't really matter. The gate is closed because they're trying to protect the field. And, and that's what the Recreation Commission's purpose is, is to have a, you know, for their care. It's, it's not, it's not just open to Sherburne residents. We don't want people driving on the fields. That's why we gated off the fields. So that it's restricted for a reason. When the gate is shut, no one should be going in there except DPW and other people taking care of the fields. The issue is when the gate is shut, there's a line of cars that show up every day. Some of them are Sherburne residents, some of them aren't. It creates a hazard, and it, and it obviously puts people on the field when the Recreation Commission decided they don't want people on that field. It's not just open, unfeathered access. You don't see that in framing him on their best fields, and you don't see it anywhere else. These are ball, these are playing fields. They're not a dog park. If you want a dog park, we need to create one, but, but that's not what Laurel is.
So do you know, clarifying question, Sean, do you know what their ballpark hours are that they're closed? I mean, they're open most weekends, I think. Is it most weekdays? I don't know the.
During the summer, it'll be open all the time. Right now, because the fields get wet.
Yeah.
They close intentionally to restrict access onto the fields. So they've been closing at night. They've had issues with people using the fields at night and, and doing damage to them. So for many years, they talked about the logistics of closing the fields. They finally pulled it off this year where they're able to close the gates at night. There's a lot of damage that gets done, and when the damage gets done, it's at night, whether it's people driving through the parking lot and doing donuts, or just skipping over the rocks and driving out into the field and doing donuts. So they've made a conscious effort to shut those gates and keep people out when they shouldn't be there. So I think that should be respected. And at the same time, if people are parking at the gate to walk their dog, they're typically letting the dog loose, and that's disgusting. And, and I can tell you that I, I for one have stepped in it. I know other people have had kids slide in dog poop. That's, that's not okay. It's not okay at all. So this is, this is one way to help manage that. There's other ways to do it, but there's no reason people need to be blocking those gates and parking out in front of those gates to get into a field that was, that they restricted access for a reason. That's why the gates are there.
All right, Eric, do you want to add on to that?
Well, just if the board wants to move forward and allow residents continued access to the field and residents don't, and you could do resident-only parking, utilize the dump sticker actually as a, as a resident parking sticker, even double it up as that. And that's just a thought. Maybe it's not to be dumb, push them. It's not to be discussed right now in detail, but that's a certain mechanism if you want a resident-only parking.
I had thought of that, but that's a good idea. I hadn't heard of it. Marion?
It sounds as if there's two very separate issues here. One is damage to the fields, which is certainly appropriate and reasonable. The other is dogs. Now, in the summer, the field is open most of the time. People do walk their dogs there, and I think we need a solution for dog poop. That is maybe more dog poop signage, maybe containers or something, but, or take your dog poop home signs. We need to control the dog poop either way, whether it's open some of the time or all of the time. There are going to be dogs there, and yet dog poop is unacceptable. So maybe we need both things.
It's pretty hard to do, though, when you have professional dog walkers showing up with half a dozen dogs, I think.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's not easy to do. So they've tried a number of these things. They've had bags there. They have trash cans there. People just don't, you know, pick up after their dogs. That's really the root cause. The problem, I, the thing I asked Dave Goldberg was, I says, what about pheasant field, you know? It turns out pheasant is different, because it's primarily just athletic fields and not sort of Laurel being sort of half recreation, half athletic. So they haven't had an issue with pheasant. So it is a challenge. So I guess I, you know, the only thing on the agenda tonight is if we want to restrict parking when the gates are closed at the gates, as I understand, it's not about parking on the field. It's just not allowing parking at the gates when they're closed. And, and we can defer voting on this if you want, till Dave Goldberg can come here or a Recreation Commission member, but as Sean indicated, they do have the right to control the fields and to protect the fields. So that's the genesis of this, and the problem with parking is people are sort of going around their closure of the fields when they feel it's necessary to protect them. Marion?
Yeah, so Jeff, what we're really voting, what we're really voting on is we need signage there, and we need.
We're only voting on one thing. I don't mean to interrupt you. We're voting on a parking restriction. This is the only thing that's on the agenda. We're not voting solutions for the field.
Yes, I understand, but a part, practically speaking, how do you enforce a parking restriction? You put up signs, and you make clear that parking is not allowed, say, police-enforced or something.
Yes, that's the intent. Don't get ticketed. Keep them be ticketed.
Yeah, because one of the, one of the signs says toe zone, so I think most people would understand that that's gonna actually be monitored and enforced.
Yeah.
Right.
Paul, do you want to add on to where we are?
Yeah, no, I was, I'm satisfied with Sean's explanation, that it's a deliberate decision to close the fields to both Sherburne residents and non-residents, and there's a rationale for it. That's what wasn't part of the explanation, because the consequence I see is we're closing a recreation facility to our residents, and something I hesitate doing without good explanation. I've heard a good explanation. So I can support the parking restriction at this point. But I, I do want as many facilities open to our residents as possible, because one of the reasons why people live in this town is to enjoy what we have.
Well, yeah, and it turns out that the youth can enjoy it, because the girls on the lacrosse team are picking up dog poop in their cross sticks. So Melinda, do you want to add to this?
Just a couple, couple of quick things. One is that at Farm Pond, we have the same issue, right? But it looks different, because our issue is people entering the pond particularly with unwashed boats, which is our thing. So while I appreciate, and you know, Dave Goldberg is my neighbor, so I knew about this beforehand, I'm just sort of throwing it out there that without enforcement, people will just park there, right? Because that's what people do, and they'll walk their dogs because they want to, was just one comment to make. And then the second thing, as I was thinking this through, is just in terms of giving information, and, and I know you wouldn't do this tonight, but consider, you know, a sign that says something along the lines of, you know, it's unfortunate we've had to make this park and it, sorry, these fields inaccessible, and the reason why is because people were walking their dogs and leaving the dog poop behind. You know what I mean? Like, I just feel like when people show up, it might be interesting or helpful for them to have that information and, you know, I don't know, maybe there's a different answer down the line. I don't know.
The, the Rec Commission has other plans, although part of what you said isn't exactly true. Their fields are closed because they're closed. The parking is sort of ancillary to that, but the fields aren't closed because of dog pooping. They're closed for whatever reason. They need to have them be protected.
Right, but that's, that's the purpose of having the parking restriction introduced now, right, is to prevent people from accessing the fields with their dogs.
Well, they're, they're closed, yeah. Has nothing to do with dogs particularly, specifically. It prevents the access in the field is closed. All right, so I think we're in agreement there. Does someone want to make a motion to accept the parking restriction in the, I think there's actually two areas that are gates there that you can park at?
I move to authorize the installation of no parking signs and no parking toe zone signs at the entrance and exits to Laurel Field's recreation area.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Thank you. And Heidi, you're up on Woodhaven Bond Anticipation.
Okay, we'll keep this short. We went out.
Okay, we'll keep this short. We went out to bid. We got three bids. The winning bid was one local bank, which was a merger from Norwood and Foxborough Savings. So hence the new name. So I'm asking for a motion to accept the bid from one local at four point three four percent from June 5th, twenty twenty-three to December 5th, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Where's second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
Hi.
Steven?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul? Hi.
I am I as well, although I liked your motions for two percent in a year or two ago better, but that's good.
I did too. Thank you.
Now, uh, Jeremy, are you gonna handle item six, which the fire and rescue, I don't see Zach here. And I know this is their training night.
Yes, yes. Uh, the chief said training tonight, so he asked me to cover this. Uh, the fire rescue department has received a donation from the Fire and Rescue Association in the amount of nine thousand dollars for the per, for the purchase of a drone for the department. This drone would help, uh, with enhance emergency response capabilities, help with their search and rescue, help with response to fire emergencies. Um, and, um, I think there's many other uses that the town could, uh, put, put this drone to. Um, so the chief is requesting that the select board accept this donation for the intended purpose.
So moved.
There's second?
Second.
Okay, Eric?
Hi.
Steven?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well. Excellent. Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, Sean, you're gonna talk about the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit establishment, safety zones?
And I apologize, this sign doesn't actually, I, I couldn't fix it in the, uh, in the background. I, so there's a couple of things here. I might have actually queued this up a little bit early. Um, because as you know, I think it was in the packet. Otherwise you were all copy. Jackie has sent in the paperwork to Mastodot and I believe the Secretary of State to approve what we voted on, which was accepting, um, chapter ninety, section seventeen C and eighteen B, if I'm saying that right. So we're, we're waiting for that, but what I would like is, um, either an endorsement, you don't typically vote to allow me to buy, uh, signage, which, which I do, but in this case, we would be, we would be installing that sign. Um, which I could just share the whole screen, but it says townwide speed limit. Sign in thickly settled district unless otherwise posted, which, which is in line. That's, that's a, that's a picture I took from Lexington. Many of the towns, I think Eric said Framingham has that throughout the city. We'd put that at all the town borders. And then at the borders of any zones we deem. Which does bring me to the first thing I wanna do, which is, as you know, downtown, well, maybe some of you don't know, downtown Sherburne has a thirty mile an hour speed limit. Elliott drops to twenty-five as it approaches Pine Hill Lane, but, uh, North Main Street, South Main Street coming in, Washington Street coming in is thirty. Uh, so part of the, uh, what we need is to, uh, I would need endorsement from myself and or Jeremy to petition the state, uh, the Mast DOT engineer to, to rescind that thirty mile an hour speed limit and allow us to go on our local, um, control, which would revert to the twenty-five in the zone. And I, I apologize, I was way too busy today. I was trying to make a map. Um, but the zone we're gonna propose is at our about fifty-nine North Main Street, which is the new development on North Main. Uh, coming into town, probably just before Lake and Elliott, which catches the intersection and then catches uh, the school zone at the new access road coming out. Uh, Washington Street just before Town Hall coming into town. And South Main Street would be just before St. Teresa's. That encompasses everything that we can easily justify, not only as thickly settled, but business. Business at one end and basically thickly settled. So that whole zone, basically that X on, on North Main, South Main, Washington and Elliott would become twenty-five. And then obviously the school zone reverts to twenty during the, during the school day.
But just procedurally though, shouldn't we first vote the zone? And I think that should be a public hearing, uh, would be my recommendation. And then buy the signs, but you're saying buy the signs first?
Well, the, the side. We don't need to. Uh, the signs I was gonna ask to buy once it's, um, approved by the state. Because either way, we adopted the townwide speed limit of twenty-five in the non-regulated areas. So there's neighborhoods right now that will revert to twenty-five rather than thirty. Uh, Melinda's neighborhood will be twenty-five. There's no statutory thirty mile an hour limit, so that will, Old Orchard, the Bear Hill Old Field area. All those neighborhoods that don't have a regulatory speed limit, they're automatically gonna revert to twenty-five. So we wanna post that. That's why we adopted it. Uh, specific zones will be different. And if you, if you wanna have a hearing, that, um, that's fine. We can schedule that for later. We wouldn't have the hearing, obviously, until we get word back from Mast DOT and the Secretary of State. But we can do that.
Are you handling?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Paul. You wanna follow up?
How are you handling the exclusion from the statute for state roots that we have, uh, isn't twenty-seven and, and sixteen state roots?
Well, it, it's not so much that they're state roots, it's that there's already a regulatory speed limit set by Mast DOT. So that's, we would, I would petition our local engineer to rescind that thirty mile an hour and allow local control of that speed limit. There's a carve out in that law that allows that. And they would all, in all likelihood, allow that. And then it would revert and it would be in the zone that you voted on.
Okay.
Okay, Eric?
So if you get permission from the Mast DOT engineer and we have a hearing and do whatever we gotta do. Does a thirty mile an hour sign come down and a black and white twenty-five go up? Or is it just the default? Do you know what I'm trying to say there? Like we've got a black and white twenty-five mile an hour without that default thing, a true black and white twenty-five mile an hour sign on, in downtown.
Allows us to do exactly that. It allows us to put a regulated, it'll just be under a local regulation rather than the state. It allows us to, we're, we're basically asking the state engineer, rescind your thirty and allow us to put the twenty-five. So at all the borders of that zone, we would put basically that in front of me.
But I don't wanna, I don't want to say unless otherwise posted, you know what I'm trying to say?
On those ones, it wouldn't say unless otherwise posted. We would be posting the twenty-five.
Or even townwide. So here's my concern. And why I'm even concerned is this townwide. So if you actually read Mass General laws on the default mile an hour default things on, um, in any community that adopts these, whether it was the old thirty or the new twenty-five, you can't radar enforce them. A cop has to follow them for one quarter mile and that's written into Mass General laws. And so I think the thirty actual regulatory might be more enforceable than the twenty-five townwide. The twenty-five townwide, I never wanted to say this in a public meeting, um, has to, cannot be enforced by radar. And that's, and it's one of the things that, you know, I've looked into it like several times and it's still there. I haven't looked at it in the last year, but I remember I've, I've, um, sent it to officers and, um, it's, it's why I'm a little hesitant on this one. I wanna, I wanna know if that can be radar enforced, if that, and if that MGL does not apply if we remove this thirty. And maybe I may, it's a question for Mast DOT. Cause I'd rather have a radar enforced thirty than a almost unenforceable twenty-five.
Good point, Jeremy.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. Um, I just wanted to point out of, it just so happened that today during the open office hours, um, that we held this morning, there was a resident that came from Coolidge Street. Um, and just recently, uh, Coolidge Street, um, they held this sort of a, a public meeting via Zoom regarding uh, traffic volume, traffic speeds and it's traffic safety along Coolidge Street. Um, and did a little, uh, uh, survey amongst themselves. So, uh, in any event, they're summarizing the results of that and putting that together. And we should be receiving some correspondence from them, uh, the chief, myself, the select board in regards to their requests. So it, it sort of relates to this discussion item as far as speed limits. Um, I think they'll, they'll be requesting that speed limits be considered changed, you know, uh, some changes considered on Coolidge Street. So just wanted to point that out, um, and something to consider in this discussion.
Absolutely. Thank you. Melinda, Melinda?
Hi, I'm back. Um, so I have a, a quick comment and a request. The comment is, um, thank you, thank you, thank you for doing this because this has been on my mind for a thousand years. And the request is, um, Sean, can we stretch instead of having whatever ends up shaking down twenty-five, thirty, whatever? It's starting at St. Teresa's. Can we bring it all the way south to at least that intersection where Goulding crosses? Um, as someone who enters and exits at Lamp lighter regularly, either by car, by foot or, you know, by bike, um, the traffic that barrels down twenty-seven southbound is outrageous. And I, you know, Officer Ted, oh, sorry, Sergeant Tedstone can attest, he actually watched somebody.
Lieutenant Tedstone.
What's that?
Lieutenant Ted.
Oh, lieutenant, sorry. Boy, I can't keep up with this guy. So, um, he actually, um, watched someone um, follow me on the hill, pass me on that double line and go flying by me at Mach, who knows, whatever. And, and pulled the person over, thankfully. Um, and I won't belabor the point. I'm sure you can understand the point that I'm making. They, they fly. They come barreling the sightline coming out of Lamp lighter. Um, from that, uh, that first curve is very, very short. People are going roughly forty-five, fifty miles an hour all the time. It is shocking to me that we haven't had a, a whole bunch of accidents. Um, but it's dangerous either way. Kids are trying to cross all the time. The, the turn from twenty-seven into Lamp lighter is blind. And if we could make that more consistent and, um, give folks a reason to, you know, slow their cars and drive more, a more consistent speed, I think that it would feel, certainly feel a lot safer.
Thank you.
Do you want me to address that?
Uh, sure, go ahead.
The limits I chose were based on, uh, one, what I think the state will approve. And two, what I think, um, this board, the select board will approve. It's, it's not really, it's not my choice. I think it will be hard to go much further on South Main and, and try to hold people at twenty-five. I drive the middle stretch of Lake Street almost every day and it's hard to pretend I'm gonna go twenty-five on the middle stretch of Lake. So it's, it's not, it's not necessarily a reasonable speed limit very far down on South Main. I agree they're going way too fast, especially by the Gouldings. But you're not gonna get anyone to go twenty-five and I don't think they'd approve it. It is probably, um, it does fit the definition. They loosened up the definition, so houses every two hundred feet on one side of the road on South Main, you probably have that going past Lamp lighter the other side. Bobby Bunton owns probably a thousand feet of frontage, so he kinda, he kinda kills the average there. But again, I, I chose where it seems like we could reasonably get people to slow down. Um, and if, and if we get that, we can start probably putting more of the signs up that say you're going too fast. Whoa, slow down.
All right. And so Jeremy, did you wanna close us out on this?
I have one comment.
Well, hang on a second. Jeremy had his hand up. You, where did he?
Sorry, I didn't lower it from the last time. Sorry, Jeff.
All right, go ahead, Paul.
That, that we can establish that the zone is recommended and change it later to expand it further as suggested. We don't have, what, what we do today is like, we, it's not a one-shot deal and then you're forever foreclosed doing anything further. So why don't we take Sean's recommendation where he feels it's, it's, it's likely to get approved. Let's get that approved, up and running and functioning. And then we can consider expanding it down South Main, North, um, North Main or whatever, whatever people wanna have us consider. We can also do, uh, special speed zones, all kinds of things, maybe to accommodate special requests. But let's not have perfect be the enemy of good. This is a good start. Let's get this done. Let's, let's get it approved. Let's, if the state's willing to relinquish control of twenty-seven and, and sixteen, that's, that's wonderful. Uh, let's see if we can get it done.
I do think, I think it is crucial, um, to answer Eric's question though, about whether it's enforceable. Cause I, I, I totally agree that an, a radar enforceable thirty is, uh, probably a lot better than an essentially unenforceable twenty-five.
So do we actually need to vote on anything tonight, Paul? I don't think we do, is my sense. We, you, you're waiting to hear from the state. So it actually isn't probably something to vote on, is it?
I could bring it back. Uh.
Well, what are you asking for approval of?
Cause I have, I have town border signs I already need to put up for jake break enforcement and other things. Like to do it all at once.
So you want us to vote on what? I'm just approving twenty-five mile per hour speed limit signage where you designated a few minutes ago? I'm fine with that. That's, that's what you recommend.
See if anyone has an opposition to putting those signs up at the town border. Once it's approved by the state.
I, I don't think that's, we have an agenda item to approve a speed regulation.
Well, I guess the question on that, I know you said we should have a public hearing, Paul, but why wasn't that uh, town meeting considered a public hearing when they voted on this?
Cause we were adopting a statute. Now we're adopting a district.
Specific requirements for hearing about notices and stuff like that, I doubt the town meeting.
So then that should be, we should hear back from the state and that should be our next force of action is a public hearing, just so you're sure.
Yes.
And I sent people to Sean, Jeremy and you, Jeff, just about, um, information that I had that I had worked with several years ago. It actually predates the recent thing where you could go to twenty-five in the town rules. So I don't know if that statute nullifies what I just sent you, you know what I mean? But I sent you the thing where it talks about I've, you have to follow for a quarter mile and radar, it can't be radar enforced and blah, 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 blah. Versus, versus the true, like the black and white, um, regulations.
I'll get my stuff together and come back for a hearing this summer.
I see, uh, Chief Galvin just, uh, popped on. I don't know if he knows the answer to that question.
I think we're good, Tom. We covered the, uh, parking at Laurel Field. We approved that. And, uh, we just talked about Sean's twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. He's gonna come back to us once we know more, uh, from the state.
Okay, I apologize. I, my brother's fiftieth birthday, birthday party tonight and I got tied up at dinner and actually forgot, so I'm sorry.
No, it's no worries whatsoever. We're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
So Eric, you're gonna walk us through the bicyclist signage?
Yeah, hold on, I had something up. So this is, um, this is something which is basically enforces or notify, provides notice to drivers about the new law, I think it's passed December of twenty-two. I hear somewhere, an Act to Reduce Fatalities, it was signed into law December twenty-two. And part of the law basically talks about when passing a vulnerable user, which could be anyone, could be, um, you know, mostly cyclists here, that you have to basically allow a distance of, uh, no less than four feet and a reasonable proper speed. So this, this signage basically, and there's a lot of cyclists that ride through Sherburne, a lot of Sherburneites ride as well, including myself. And this basically, um, makes it enforceable that basic cars can't buzz you. And as far as the four feet, uh, people have asked me, well, if it's three and a half feet, that doesn't matter. But I've had some very close calls where I've felt the wind of like a rear view mirror go right past my head. And I think what this does is basically en- enforce that that's now illegal to do that. And, um, and it's come on the backs of, you know, many tragedies, uh, deaths and accidents over the years. And it was, um, resoundly passed, uh, at, um, Beacon Hill. And I just think it's something, and, and so Mast DOT is actually providing these signs for free. You can see in the background materials, it basically says, you know, talks about the, talks about the, the safe passage around it. And, uh, we just simply have to sign a member of understanding with Mast DOT before the end of the month. And we get these signs. We have to tell them how many we want. And, uh, we just have to, I think, send them pictures and once they're installed to prove that we just, you know, we actually put them up. And, uh, and that's it. And when it comes down to placing them, I would like to have some say into where they go. I have ideas. Um, but ultimately it'd be like, you know, um, Sean, that would, um, install them.
Just one comment?
Need to vote on it though, or it seems like you could just do that, can't you? Do we need to vote on this, Paul?
I don't think you do. Cause it's, it's no money. So I was actually advised, we don't think, let's be a, a vote of support, really. Cause really a member of understanding, it doesn't actually have any money, I think, to be, um, executed by either you or Jeremy.
So if I could, the comment I would make is to go with the smaller signs rather than the bigger signs. Because as a rural community, if we load ourselves up with a lot of signs, it, it does. Because as a rural community, if we load ourselves up with a lot of signs, it, it does ultimately impact sort of the quality of the rural character of the town. So you have two options there. One is the bigger signs and the smaller signs. I would go with the smaller signs.
The bigger signs are forty miles, oh, sorry. The bigger signs are forty miles an hour and above, and I think there's probably only one road, which that might fit that. What's Route twenty-seven entering Sherburne from Medfield?
Well, I guess the only thing I'm thinking here, though, is the state's giving us the signs, so we're not selecting the signs. The vice article, the state's providing the signs.
They have it based on miles an hour. So he said, under forty, use a smaller, above forty, use the larger. And I think that might be one or two spots. I would stick to what they recommend because they're the ones giving them and they're the ones that's at the regulation. And the roads that may be above forty, like I said, twenty-seven might be, I didn't hear what Sean said, I think he answered that. A bigger sign there might be warranted, to be honest with you. I know it's across from Paul's house, but it's one of the things where people are flying into town and coming up that road and, and so on.
Marion?
You muted.
Marion, we can't hear you.
Yeah, I would add to what Eric said. There are roads that people fly down, being, and we know what they are, including, for example, certain segments of Western Ave. And there are other very fat roads that the, the speed limit may not be forty, but people go forty and over. And, I mean, for me, safety trumps rural character in the sense that on the, on the roads where people do drive fast, no matter what the signage is, we want to try to keep the bicycles safe. And there aren't that many of them. For most of the roads in town, I'd agree with Paul, but there are a few that I think we should put up a larger sign just because of the speeds that cars actually use. I'd like to hear from Tom Galvin, though, as well.
Who coincidentally has his hand up. You want to go ahead, Tom?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I agree to stick with the state recommendations. I agree a lot also with what Paul says about the, the sign pollution that comes along with it. But the larger signs that we put out also do create more of a distraction, too, which can create more of a problem. So I think to follow the guidance that, that MassDOT is putting out for these signs makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Eric?
Just that, you know, a preliminary recommendation and what other communities are doing, I'd recommend pretty much the entry points into town. So they're going to see this, they're going to see the twenty-five mile default. I don't think it's that much pollution when you ride at the town border there, stuff like that. I'd recommend Farm Road, not the end that comes into town, obviously I already have one, but maybe from twenty-seven down on Farm Road. Goulding Street, maybe both directions on Goulding Street coming off of twenty-seven. And I don't think Dover is going to do this because I don't like cyclists, so I'd actually do one entering Dover as well, from the Sherburne line going in. Lot of cyclists in Dover and they, I don't know, I think it's going to be tough. I know it's going to be tough for them to give clearance between their S-Class and the bike, so.
We'll add a toll to the bridge also.
That's what, please chime me in when you start deciding how many you want.
All right, thanks. So the next item, Jeremy, is the Charles River Public Health District?
Should we vote that on support? Are we good?
We needed to vote on the, but it seems like we were just accepting a state offer and it's no cost.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're cool, that's all.
If it's okay with the board, I can work with Eric. There's a table that's in this, the MOU for the bike signs.
Yeah.
I can work with Eric as far as the, you know, proximal locations, they're asking for locations and quantity. It's probably going to be a dozen to two dozen. Most of them would be the small signs, maybe a hand, you know, just a couple would be the larger signs. But I'll work with Eric on that. And if the board's fine, I'll sign and submit the MOU.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. We're going to be in trouble if we have bicycles going faster than twenty-five miles an hour, you know, Sean's going to nail them on the other end.
I got to say something real quick while Tom Galvin's on the line. So in Goulding Street, when they had the visible board that gives you speed feedback, me and my friend kept seeing if we could exceed forty miles an hour on our bicycles coming down that hill on Goulding Street. So I wonder if that hurt the effect of what I was trying to do. That's all I'll say.
I don't know, but when I run, that's my starting point because I wouldn't want to do that at the end. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I was going to say that we tested a bike the other day and Sergeant or Lieutenant Tedstone was out on it. And he hit like thirty-seven miles an hour. So there's some pretty, pretty quick bikes out there.
Yeah, it's steep.
And especially with the e-bikes now and the pedal assist.
Yep.
All right, like motorcycles.
Yep. So I think we're good there. Jeremy, you want to walk us through the Charles River Public Health District?
Sure, thanks, Jeff. So this is coming back. This was, I gave you a summary at your last meeting. Since then, the Board of Health has formally voted. They have been kept informed of the progress through the multiple meetings we've had with the, with the potential draft district member communities. Now, we've met about six times with the group discussing, you know, the possibility of this, this public health district and the structure of it and some of the things that could be accomplished. And the, the group has come to have, you know, this MOU be one of the deliverables it is looking to do to set up for fiscal year FY twenty-four. That would allow us access to a shared amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in grant funds that this district would, would open up for, for the town. The Board of Health has voted at their last meeting to endorse Sherburne's participation in the state action for Public Health Excellence Program and to enter into a shared service agreement arrangement with the Charles River Health District. And they also voted to support a memorandum of understanding with said district shall be finalized and managed by the town administrator. In your packet is a draft of that MOU. That MOU is based on similar ones used in other regional health districts that have been created recently in a Commonwealth. And also has been reviewed several times by Needham's Council and will be reviewed prior to execution if, if the board so supports by our town council as well. And so looking for the board's support.
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, Eric?
I.
Steven?
Can I ask one sort of clarifying question?
Sure, Steven.
After the, after FY twenty-four, after presumably the four hundred and twenty thousand in, in grant funding runs out, how, how is this health district funded?
It's, the, the funds are envisioned to, the state is going to continue to provide these funds for the foreseeable future. There's an initiative afoot to regional, to help support these regional public health districts. So we, currently they're, they're thinking it's going to be at least three years of funding through this grant. Originally, we were suspecting we would get about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars through the state program. That quickly doubled in, in the amount offered, so it's over three hundred thousand through that grant. That is slated for FY twenty-four for this district. And, you know, the, the major benefit for, for the town of Sherburne is that we'll be, be able to fund a shared public health nurse at no cost to the community with Dover. The, the grant funds would cover all of the salary and benefits of that position. So in addition, we would have the ability to, to continue to investigate how we can share public health services through all the communities and leverage the skills that the other communities have. Provide, you know, see what we can do to help other communities as well and continue to investigate whether we wanted to move on from an MOU to something a bit more formal in the future. So.
Great. So I just wanted to make sure that we're not.
Table for the next three or four years.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were not kind of just freely entering into a first year free and then you're on the hook for, for paying for it for the rest of the way.
Yeah, the MOU was pretty clear as well that, you know, any of the, the salary and expenses are borne by the grant fully and then there's no additional cost that the town would bear.
I could just add to that.
Corollary to that is, this can't be used to fund things that we currently fund. It's not taking things we currently do and then get state funding for them. So it seems like if, if they reduce the funding, we could discontinue the services since we didn't have the services to begin with. You know, we were really capitalizing on opportunity to get new services is what they're trying to do. In a way, it's kind of like the police dispatch center. They want to push this regionalization of shared costs and also shared knowledge and expertise, you know, it turns out Needham has a few areas with septic systems, but Dover and Sherburne have a lot more experience in that area, so they need our help sometimes, too.
So Jeff?
Yeah.
I just want to point out to Steve that if a disaster occurred, we have the right to get out of this agreement on ninety days' notice. So we're not locked into something for a long period of time. But I think the program is good enough that if we did lose funding on it, I would support some kind of local funding for it. It's the kind of thing we want to do. But the word I'm getting from state officials is the funding's going to be there. As Jeff has said, and I think as Jeremy has said, there's, there's a real policy decision by the state to push regionalization. So I, I think it's a reasonable risk to take that the funding will be there. But worst case, Steve, we, we can opt out.
Great, thanks. Yeah, it's, it's probably just the, the advisory chair and me that I always want to know the true cost of, of something, you know. I mean, this is, this is a big thing and it's great and I support it, but it's like, it's not, nothing's ever free, right? What's the true cost of this? That's always my question.
We'll wean you off that, Dan. You don't need to worry about it. So your vote is then, Steven?
I, I vote I.
Marion?
I.
Paul?
I.
I am I as well, five to zero. Jeremy, you're next again, too, on procurement and purchase order system, purchasing and purchase order system.
Thanks. I just wanted to bring this forward as a sort of an informational. And so we're, we've been looking at implementing an administrative policy for procurement. There, there really hasn't been one in the past and that's led to some confusion among town departments and volunteer boards regarding how, you know, what, what methods and policies are in place for the town to procure certain items or services. So I've put together this draft, working with the department heads and town council and have been taking advantage of some of our recent procurements to also work with town council to develop contract templates and IFB or, you know, IFB templates, RFP templates to have in place so that we can be, you know, ensure that we remain in compliance or come, come more into compliance with state procurement law. So, you know, by the town's bylaw, the town administrator acts as the chief procurement officer. I have all the certifications to do that duty. And, you know, I think in my several months now with the town, I've, I've found that, you know, there's a need for this policy so that we have some more standards and more consistency in our methods to comply with procurement law. And also to guide the various departments on what steps we should take to execute a contract and to ensure that we're using contracts that are in the best interest of the town and that are, you know, executed by those that have the authority to do so. So that's the main purpose of this policy. And we're also taking advantage of the policy to start implementing Invader, Invader is our financial accounting system. It has a module that will allow us to use purchase orders. So we haven't formally used purchase orders in the past, but as part of this policy, we're going to be phasing those in, in the next fiscal year. So we're going to, you know, kind of activate that module in Vadar and to start issuing and requiring departments to request putting requisitions to get formal purchase orders so that funds are encumbered for any purchases that are over a thousand dollars. Which will help us. That has been a thing that's, that's been, has come up in the past. So that'll help us track our, our budget a little bit better going forward and encumber funds. So I wanted to bring this forward to the, the board for, for support and to get your input on its implementation. Like I said, I've been working with the department heads and council and various other stakeholders as well and in putting this draft together.
Excellent. Thank you for doing it, Paul.
So I had two suggested changes and one comment. The suggested changes are in disposal of equipment. I think we ought to address the issue of trading in vehicles. Sometimes when you buy a vehicle, it's appropriate to do a deal where you turn in your vehicle and buy the new vehicle. There's, there's like no real provision for that here. Okay. The second suggested change would be the fact that for acquisitions under ten thousand dollars, which describes a surplus property and the designated time and place of sale is to be posted in town hall for one week. And I would suggest that that's a pretty old fashioned way of doing things, is to post things in town hall because nobody sees it. Why not put it on the website? Even though it's a small amount, it putting it in town halls is really a waste of time. Nobody, nobody goes to town hall anymore to look for a notice. Those are the two changes I would make. The, the comment is that what I've been doing as town council and other communities is the one I do, the motions for town meeting, instead of saying, authorize the police department to acquire vehicles, I always put in there to authorize the chief procurement officer to acquire with the approval of the police department cruisers. And do that with every purchase to specifically reference in every town meeting vote that the chief procurement officer is the one who's buying all the stuff with the approval. And I do that because that educates everybody in the process, that educates the department heads. It educates the public, it educates advisory, that there needs to be centralized purchasing here. And then we're looking at capital projects, we're looking at expending money. It ought to be done professionally by a professional like yourself and not, not being managed by all these different people all over the place who do this on an occasional basis. So that's the intent of the law and it's better served by fixing a town meeting for a while until the message is pretty clear. So that's it.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah, so just a logistics thing. I see in the policy, it pretty much mimics a lot of like the, the mass general laws, so the thresholds of ten, ten to fifty, over fifty, under one forty-nine and thirty-third AM and stuff like that. Is there, do you need, what if those, those thresholds change in the state laws? Do you need our vote to come before us again? Or could we give some kind of flexibility to simply adapt this consistent with the existing state laws? That's all, you know, they change a little bit every now and then, like when I started, it used to be five thousand dollar threshold, now it's ten, ten thousand and stuff like that. Can we make it such that, you know, we can approve it, but even allow flexibility to change it consistent with laws?
Though I, I'm hoping that those thresholds will be changing. There's, there's an act for the, the state legislature now for purchasing parity. The school, some of the school purchasing changed, the thresholds changed for school purchasing last year and they didn't do it for municipal purchasing. I hope, hopefully that catches up to itself. But I envision this, Eric, as a, as an administrative policy issued by the town administrator. So as things change, you know, if the thresholds change, then I would reissue this administrative policy as the, as the town administrator, as the chief procurement officer. So I, you know, I would do that, you know, as needed, as, as the laws were changed. I tried to keep it somewhat brief, but have some detail so that folks wouldn't have to reference another document for the thresholds so that they could just kind of walk away with these four pages and sort of have what they needed. Intentionally put in, put in there.
And what that means, you don't have to come before us. I don't think that's necessary. That's the guy I'm getting at.
And we don't need to vote on this. You're just informing us, as you said, right?
Okay.
All right. And Paul, your hand is just still up. You don't have another comment or? Okay, just confirm me, that's all. So item eleven, it's about our select board meeting calendar. You know, the first thing I would ask, and you can see it below in consent agenda, do we really need to meet a week from tonight on the first? That seems a short period of time. I don't know. Diane, do you know if we have a lot of things on the draft agenda? And given that Monday's a holiday, I'm sort of wondering if we need to have a meeting a week from tonight.
Well, actually, we need to have Dorothea come back before the select board for her climate action plan. She has to present it to the select board before, am I right, Jeremy, June fifteenth? Is that the deadline for her? He's muted, I guess.
I'm sorry, Diane, my, my audio just cut out. I missed what you said. I'm sorry, Diane, my, my audio just cut out. I missed what you said.
So I, I, I told the select board that Dorothea, our sustainability coordinator, needs to come before the select board. Could be because part of the climate action control plan is that she presents something to the select board. And I think it has to be by June fifteenth. Is that her cutoff date?
That's correct. I believe, so the, the climate action plan, which, you know, she's been putting together, the grant funded plan. Is, is it near the end? It's in a final draft form. The, the committee that helped, the working group that helped develop that has, has been commenting on the, the draft document. And public comment, I believe, is scheduled to begin on June first. So the night that, or the day that the select board would get a report out. So it kind of coincides with, you know, giving an update to the select board on that proposed plan and the start of the public comment period. That's, I think, going to be open for two weeks through the fifteenth. So it, it seems like it was timely for the, for that update to happen on June first. I believe that's really the only time sensitive item.
But couldn't we do it on the fifteenth? If, if she has to have it done by the fifteenth, it seems to me it might be more advantageous for us to hear the public comment.
Well, I asked her if we could go on to the fifteenth and she was adamant about, that would be way too late for her, that she needs to go before that. Because I did try and push her earlier to.
Talked to her again. I, if that's the only item that we're holding a town, a, a select board meeting, that seems like a waste to me.
I think there's also an issue with, I think, selectmen to rent this happened to mention to me the other day that. Barbecue for Gino Calucci, that he's not available to come to the select board meeting on June fifteenth. And I believe Marion as well is, won't be able to attend that night either.
Is that?
Oh, that's correct. I can't be there on the fifteenth.
And Paul, you can't either?
I have a, I have an annual town meeting that I, I've got to attend.
I, I'll, I'll be away. I won't have internet access.
Okay, and then Stephen, is your comment related to this?
Uh, it's, I suppose obliquely related. I, when this topic came up, I just kind of wanted to float, and I know that this has been a controversial issue for the select board in the past. But the Conservation Commission also meets on Thursdays and. They meet every first and third Thursday of each month. Simply, it would be personally convenient to me if we didn't frequently have meetings on the same night. As conservation. June is one of the months where that's, looks semi problematic because first, the, the first and the third. Are, are scheduled meetings. So if the fifteenth is one that we can't have anyways, I don't know if. Doing June eighth and June twenty-second would be.
No, see, the problem is more fundamental, Stephen. We meet every two weeks. They may, they meet twice a month, so it never sinks. It, it gets off right away.
Yeah, I mean, I know it gets off, but it's, I mean, part of it is that I, I know that the select board in the past has adjusted. Adjusted the meeting calendar to fit sort of schedule conflicts for various select board members. And I'm, it's not a big deal. It's not a big deal if, if we can't accommodate it, but I'm just kind of like, looking at June, I'm like, well, that's. That would be a solution for June.
Well, the only, like I say, we meet every two weeks. We're not changing that in my view. So it's not going to be that we go to. Twice a month on, on the opposite week. So it's always going to be a problem. So let's see if we, if we meet on the first. Is that really going to help Dorothea if she has to have approval after the public comment on the fifteen? I don't see that helping her having us present next week, but why don't you get back to us? We can't address this right now. But I don't, I would think it would still be better for Dorothea if we heard it after the public comment and then we could vote on it. So I'm not sure why she needs to present at June first.
One other point, if I could.
Go ahead, Paul.
So the, I, I've been asked to roll in other towns on what vote is necessary to actually adopt a. Climate action plan.
Yeah.
And the best answer is a town meeting vote, which means approval of the plan would take place at a planned. Fall town meeting and not on June fifteenth. Yes, I've approved a selectman doing it. But that's only after a, a public hearing and trying to provide as much coverage as possible. You really need the input of town meeting because these things are. In significant. Plans, they have impact on the community, impact on, on planning for the future. It, 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 it's a much bigger issue. Should, should be addressed. By the voters in the fall. So this idea that we have to have it done by the fifteenth. I, I don't think is real. I think they want to get the, as much drafting done to use the grant funding and, and that's fine. But I don't think saying it has to be approved by the fifteenth is, is the way that we should be going.
So let's, Jeremy and Diane, let's follow up with Dorothea. I, I think there's some uncertainty here. We can't address it tonight.
So Jeff, real quick.
Yep.
So two people can't make the fifteenth, is that correct?
Right.
Correct.
So, I mean, do we hold the first anyway? Just because, uh, to basically, like, I don't know, so Diane or Jeremy, whoever. When, when you fill up an agenda, I mean, stuff's coming, it's how much of stuff coming at you at the last minute? You know what I mean? I mean, how much can we like, because in the past, and this is like several, several chairs ago, we'd actually reduce to like one meeting in like July, just for the sake of vacations and stuff like that.
Right.
We expect a lot of intensity if we.
But we also, we've been, Eric, we switched to the two week, we did that jump in April, so that this would be the two week calendar that worked for you also. That's why.
I get that. And I'm not asking to change that. What I'm simply saying is like, what I'm saying is, do we need all these meetings, period? We just like knock off a meeting, just knock off the fifteenth and get everything we need to get done between the first and the whatever else. Like, so like, I remember when Chuck was on, we'd always have like, and, and George's chair, didn't we have like one meeting in July? You know, I mean, one meeting in August, we'd pick a month where this one, just to kind of lighten it up for the summertime.
We did.
I haven't seen that in four years that I've been on the select board.
We did that quite a few years ago.
Yeah.
We had one meeting in August. We had two in July and one meeting in August.
You know, it feels like I just got on the board, but I'm the second most tainted person on this board right now. So I guess.
The problem is Monday's a holiday, so if we, we need to decide on June first tonight because I need to post on Tuesday.
Yeah.
And order for us to meet on Thursday. So we would, the board would need to vote tonight whether they really want to hold that meeting on June first.
So the question goes the same. Do we need all these meetings? That's all the rest. That's my question is, you know, do it's not.
Certainly, Eric, I mean, i- if you set out a schedule, um, we can adapt to the schedule that you set out. We just need to know in advance what the schedule is. I know you're trying to get back on the schedule, but you know, is there any?
We're on the schedule. This puts us off the schedule is the point I made. We're on, the June first would have us beyond the schedule if we. Don't do that, then we're off the schedule. So it sounds like we can't meet on the fifteen. So why don't we meet on the first for now? And we'll see, then that gets around the eighth. Stephen asked about the eighth, but.
I mean, I could, I can do the eighth on one thing, but just one of those things where it seems like. It seems like we're adjusting for different reasons. I don't know. I, I guess that's my only hesitation. I mean, I'll adjust whatever people want to do.
Be here the fifteenth. If we have a situation where there's one person that can't be there, I would just say four people can meet. You know, we also don't have to have five at every meeting.
Yeah, I know.
In my view, if there's.
I agree.
It's a, to me, if there's two that can't make it, then it's worth rescheduling. So fifteen sounds like it's out. And I don't think we want to go, you know, to the twenty-third or whatever the next date is. So it seems like we have to meet on the first with whatever items we have.
Right.
And then we can decide that night if we want to go two weeks, have that be, June first be our starting point and go a two week in early. So we have to go back to that off week. And Stephen, we'll take your input in to consideration. But it, but it's difficult with Concom because they meet twice a month and we meet two and a half times a month, whatever it works out to be.
We need George here who'd always flip out and say like, you know, Concom suggests.
We can also get him to come on the first as a guest. We can get him to lecture us. Let's, let's keep going. So we'll meet on the first. With whatever agenda items we have, and it's a week from tonight. So that takes care of item eleven. Item twelve, I think you all know about already. I drafted a proclamation for my kickoff. My, hopefully, most of you have signed it already. If you haven't, I'd like to get it signed tomorrow. I think I cautioned everyone, this is a surprise. Mike doesn't know anything about this. So his family's kept it a secret from him and it's been, I've talked to most of his family members. So we'll be. Unfortunately, I'm in Chicago, so, so Paul's going to present the proclamation at Pine Hill Cemetery on Memorial Day. And, and that's really in recognition that Mike's been running the Memorial Day parade for forty-five years. Is a, in addition to all the other things I listed in the proclamation. So are there any questions about this?
So the proclamation is fully signed by everybody. And so. I, since everybody's already signed it, I'm going to move for approval, which hopefully should be unanimous because you've already signed it to everybody.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Eric.
Hi.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Yeah, I am I as well.
So Paul, you're going to read it out at the thing?
Yep.
Alright.
I want to thank Jeff for putting this together and, uh, well done. It's very well done. And Diane.
You know what we could do is maybe, because Eric actually had him as the scout master. So I'm wondering if the way that you sort of could both, he'll be there if you could sort of both stand up there. You know, at least to let them know, because Eric had Mike Pickham as, he was scout master for thirteen years in Sherwin. So you guys could decide. I can't, I can't be there unfortunately. But I've had three calls this week by Diana Houck also, so she's, she's prepared to do most of the speaking roles.
Good.
All right. So now we're on to consent agenda. Do, we want to just make a motion to approve this consent agenda? Is there any discussion item?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Eric.
I.
Stephen.
I.
Marion.
I.
Paul.
Hi.
And I am I as well. And the only adjustment is Diane will take the six fifteen off the, in the consent agenda. So now we're down to any select board reports. Anybody have anything? Nothing? That's okay. It's okay. We've had a pretty busy meeting. Any TA reports, Jeremy?
Yeah, I have a few updates for the, for the board. I just wanted to, to remind folks that there is a public hearing. The Board of Health does have a public hearing on Ju- June seventh for their regulation update. The details of that are on the town's website. There's a great summary that was put together by the Board of Health summarizing their proposed changes. But again, their, their public hearing on those changes is on Wednesday, June seventh, starting at eight P M. Heard from Senator Roush's office and the Senate budget for FY twenty-four. Includes thirty-five thousand dollars for funding towards the, the funding of the three hundred fiftieth anniversary. So that's in the, in the state budget, at least the Senate version. Hopefully it stays in the rectified version when the, the House and Senate combined.
That already, by the way.
What's that?
I told George Fisk that, that she did that.
Yep, but it was that, you know, they've been debating the, the Senate budget this week, you know, it's, it's formally in, which is good. And just a few updates on Farm Pond, since the, the beach will be open on Saturday. Is Genie here? I don't know if you want to give an update on staffing, but we've got a, we've had a great. Group of folks step up and to, to, to work at Farm Pond this year at the reservation. For lifeguards and rangers and waterfront supervisors is two as a reservation manager. So I think we're pretty well set up for staffing in this, this summer. The Rangers have already started. The waterfront will be open the Saturday. Thanks to Sean and the Public Works folks. They were able to move the, the yacht club clubhouse is now moved. It's located on town property now. As of about a week ago. Which is good news. You heard a little update earlier about the watershed, watershed based plan that's being done. And the public meeting that's going to be held for that on June sixth. Hillary Kenyon of Applied Water Sciences will present that. There has been a request, and this is something that might, you might want to consider on a future agenda for the select board. The Farm Pond Advisory Committee has, has requested board support for. Moving forward with some maintenance of the berm on Farm Pond. And there is some, you know, council has reviewed that the town's, you know, authority or ability to do so. And so there's some information I can share with the board if, if you desire. But the, the advisory committee would like to, to get support to, to, to do some of those, some maintenance on the berm. Which would necessarily involve the Conservation Commission as well. So.
We have some concerns though. I, I understand that it's not, they're not in favor of some aspects of it, I'm told.
Yeah, at least the prior commission was. So there, there may be, you know, might be worthy to, to discuss. Maybe have a, a group meeting with members of, of the advisory and the Conservation Commission, the select board to, to come to consensus on what. Could be done on the berm.
Well, I guess my reaction is if we're having this consultant do the study, maybe they could provide some technical input also. On the water quality. I mean, conservation is concerned about preserving the water quality. Maybe there's. Things that the consultant could advise us on, perhaps different ways of doing it or different provisions you make to prevent. You know, migration into the pond.
I think, Jeff, I think too with the berm, if they're more concerned that possibly that. The water is flowing through the berm in, into the, down to the Charles, and that could be why. The water level at the pond is low. So that's another issue.
Okay.
So what berm are we talking about?
It's on the far side. It's by, is that Kingsley's property or whoever's property it is?
It's kind of by Jim Campbell's property. It's near the old pump house.
Yeah, to the left of the pump house a little bit.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the parking lot where you go up the hill.
No.
The berm, it kind of divides the, the pond, the, the pond into a, like a smaller section.
Yes, yep.
I'll give you a tour soon. I'll start swimming it again.
Real quick is on Farm Pond also, Sean and I had a kickoff meeting with Stan Tech regarding. The plan for stormwater and the new path. So we started that process.
Great.
Yeah, contracts in place and, you know, before long, they will have some alternatives from Stan Tech to, to present to the board for information. The police and fire chiefs have, have expressed a little concern about, and are suggesting that the Farm Pond rules and regs be updated to. Just to note that the island is private. Just to, to warn folks to, to not. It's not a public property, so that has come up as well, but.
There are signs on the island.
Signs on the island, they're suggesting. The rules and reg signs at the parking area to note that. Something to consider. Moving on.
Three of the houses own it, share it, I think.
Correct.
No, the Pertwonders were one of the three. I know I saw.
I'll wrap my stuff up pretty quick so we can all get to the game.
Message there. That was just me trying to be funny because it's late.
Just an update on Doping Brook Road, Silver Farm Drainage, Silver Farm Drainage. After several meetings on site and with the Butters and. The Conservation Commission, some other members to select of Sean and the Public Works folks. Reviewing a, a number of the records available. We've come up with a game plan for like a phase one approach to helping solve that drainage issue. The Conservation Commission is asking that we file an RDA to do this phased one work, which would be, it would entail. Installing sort of a sluice or an ore of this to control flows coming from the Silverwood Farm property onto. The, the properties along Doping Brook Road. And that, that would, you know, that RDA would be sort of the, the process of approval from the Conservation Commission. Once that approval is granted by the commission, then Public Works could go forward and install that. The installation would not take over that, that long. So that is our, our phase one approach. Downstream, sort of down at the bottom of the hill, we've had some productive meetings with the Central Massachusetts Mosquito Control District. And they're planning and, and putting together a game plan to do some dredging. Of some drainage channels kind of in the lower, lower reaches of, of Doping Brook. Which should help relieve at least some of the, sort of the, you know, downhill. Relief of, of the water.
That was a great initiative you took to reach out to them, I think, too. Quick question for you though. We have the standing orders of a condition or whatever the. A concom had issued and had never enforced. So the D E P was sort of wanting us to enforce them. Do they have to? Sort of resurrect and revise or delete those orders?
We will, yeah. We, we discussed that as well. The Conservation Commission, um, folks and I. So. The first step is to get this already in place so that we can try this, um, approach to try to relieve, you know, and minimize some of the flow that's coming off. The farm property. But yes, they, the commission will need to, and you know, they'll, they've asked for help to, to do so. But to resurrect the, the order of conditions and either carry forward with that. Actually Courtney has her hand up. Maybe I should.
I know, I know, I know. She stayed up late tonight. Go ahead Courtney.
Uh, Courtney X, speaking as co-chair of conservation. Um. The, the order of conditions is still valid and nothing has changed. You know, and last time we were asked to amend it, um, the commission declined. This, this RDA would be like completely separate from the order of conditions. There are still other areas. That still need to be, um, completed and brought into compliance. So that's a, that's like a separate matter.
Yep, but what could it impact? In other words, if, if what this RDA accomplishes would affect some of the orders, you know what I mean? Maybe the, some of the orders would no longer need to be done because this intervention worked.
Um.
I don't know. I've just.
Not necessarily. I mean, there, there is completely different.
Okay.
Areas involved as well. So, um, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's going to change.
All right. Thank, thanks.
Thanks, Courtney. Uh, one more update, um, just kind of high level on sixty-four Farm Pond, uh, Farm Road. The foundation drain, um, and town catch basin, uh, question. Just wanted to let the board know that our stormwater consultant has put forward a proposal to help. Uh, scope out several alternatives to, to solve that. Um, and probably the next check in with the board would be, once we have some alternatives back from that consultant. We could bring that, those, those ideas back to the board and, uh, invite some other stakeholders as well. We have also informed, um, you know, folks on Farm Road that our consultant is, is going to be working on these alternatives.
Excellent. A comm is our consultant for that?
Correct.
Okay. Awesome.
And.
All right, you guys.
Sit.
I think we've, we've covered it. Does anyone have any additional items? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
What's the score? What's the?
Twenty to thirty-five.
We don't want to jinx them, Paul. We don't want to jinx them. All right, you guys. Thank you very much. Good night.
I second the move to adjourn. I say yes.
All right, Stephen. I know I didn't take a vote, Marion.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
I am I as well. It's unanimous. Thank you.